Regular meeting, Board of Selectmen for today, November 9th is called to order.
Make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of October 31st and October 24th, 2022.
Second.
Oh, September 21st, 2022 also.
Okay, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve non-public meeting minutes, September 21st and October 24th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
No, just note that the December property tax bills will be due December 21st, so just a bit amount earlier than coming prior to your...
Compared to Christmas.
Yes, yes, it is still around holidays unfortunately.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public input? Bruce, Jane? Bring in a support fee.
I have a question for Steve, Michael.
Do we have anybody online?
Something I didn't understand.
Josh is in charge of that now.
What's the issue?
Do we have anybody online who'd like to?
Not as of yet.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
No problem.
Jane, is your question having to do with the CIP?
Yes.
Okay, Steve's gonna present that.
Yes, okay.
Great, you're on the floor, Mr. Bell.
Thank you. I just want to, well, summary of the beginning and the numbering to make sure that it's the first which is year-over-year analysis of the cash portion of the capital budget. And as you know, we'll recall, CIPC looks at the total capital budget on an economic basis, so it includes capital cash contributions to reserve fund plus annual debt service on our capital-related town debt. The debt service portion in the current budget is basically unaltered from last year, some items pushed out, notably the fire station. So that's not the focus, the cash side was the focus. And I'd like to point out that at the bottom of this first schedule, which is cash capital budget year-over-year, it shows a relatively modest 4.3% increase, which is wonderful and good, however, it is not the economic truth of what's going on. The receipt and application of grants, especially the ARP, the American Recovery Plan grants, have distorted the numbers materially. For instance, consider at the very top, DPW shows a $5,000 decrease. Actually, the increase is far greater, the decrease is really a numeric sort of, well, not intentional sleight of hand, but town bridges were reduced by $70,000. That is solely due to a very nice grant that we got that basically has covered our bridge budget for the next five years in both cover and other bridges which are not cover bridges. And that offsets pretty much an equal or almost equal $75,000 increase in town in DPW equipment, principally trucks. That is simply the cost of living and the high cost of dump trucks that we're encountering and the difficulty to obtain them. I'm sorry, this $75,000 was due to road reconstruction, which is just a cost of the program that we have in place, no add-ons to it, same program, it's just gonna cost 75 more. That's offset by the bridge reduction. Equipment went up by $25,000 and that's offset by the cover bridges reduction. So we're taking one-time grants and applying them to operational items, which is not usually a good policy, but here a fortuitous policy for us and it was the only place we could put it as the grants were specifically earmarked for those items. So it is not all as rosy as it may seem. I hate to be the forebearer of bad news. Also, we received two other grant benefits, one-time grant benefits where pretty much where the town portion of the Upper Wilson Pond Dam and the Christian Hill Bridge has been pretty much reduced or eliminated. So that took some pressure off it, all due to grants, whether or not the federal government keeps putting out of these grants, which I sincerely hope they do not. The printing press is getting a little tired. These are items that we'll have to cope with in the future. On the next page, I tried to schedule this out and show the direct impact on the budget. First try to look at one-time grants from ARP, they're being used for the recycle center, a one-time, highly desirable rebuild that will, I think, be well-received and utilized by the town. And the other chunk is going to Richardson Park where the troubles, trying to put in restroom facilities, which I view as pretty much a one-time, one-off item. So those were grants received, applied against special items, good use, and saving the town money in this account would have had to spend the total cost or bond for. The other one-time charges, I show an offset of $95,000 for the receipt of the bridge grants, that's just year-over-year, the actual bridge grant, I believe, was $265?
Yes.
And that's been based in over the years, so the 95 may seem smaller. Also, we have present kind of $29,000 reduction in the grange, so that gives us 124,000 one-time items year-over-year. If you take that back and add to that to the 4% number, 35,000, it comes out to a somewhat breathtaking 20% increase year-over-year. The message here is we don't need a lot of money added on to anything of recurring nature if we can possibly avoid it. And that really is the sum and substance. We still have, as I like to say, known and unknowns, we have the whole issue with the fire station, which is driving all sorts of other things, for instance, town hall and this, that, and the other thing, and it's being buffeted by a number of possible changes, county ambulance, the possibility that Cutler School may free up, but I don't think that's gonna happen anytime soon frankly. The school district's gotta get through a three-point million-dollar bond issue.
Forty-two or forty-three.
Which we'll think of in my book, which is not gonna go down well, but who knows? And these are issues driving the budget that are sort of beyond CIPC's control at this point. With that, I'll answer any specific questions you have, but there are 40 odd pages of this thing and I've been through them enough times by myself. And since Michael, I think, well, any questions?
Jane, you have another question?
Yeah, I just, I just would like to know how, why and how you justify a reduction of $29,000 on the grange when we're trying to raise money for the grange?
We had a debate about that, you know my feelings about that.
That's, we didn't have a debate about a $29,000 reduction.
We had a debate about how much... We had a debate about how much we were gonna put into it. The committee voted for $1,000.
You seconded my motion, remember?
I know, we voted $1,000.
But the $30,000 was a one-time event last year and that's what threw this budget out of whack, so this year you wanted to have some type of contribution, so I made the motion for $1,000. We cannot afford to do $30,000 a year.
Well, no, but what happened to the 30, it was there, still there, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can't take money out of this without spending it, no.
So you're just...
Operations.
You're figuring that, we're giving it that much less than we gave it last year.
Correct.
But last year we gave it 30 because it was a warrant article at the time, it didn't come out of the CIP here.
It went into the CIP.
It went in, right, okay, got it. I just wanted to understand it, Steve, that's all. No offense intended, I just wanted to know.
I believe we did explain that the 30 was there during the meeting.
Well, there were other things during the meeting that I did understand that I don't agree with either, such as the building has no architectural integrity and it says right in the study that we paid for that it does, so I don't want to get back into that debate, I just wanted to understand the arrow on this page and now I do, thank you.
Anyone else? Ken?
You'd be open to softening the blow on next year's CIP increase by bringing some of that forward to this year, so that the 4.5% comes up a little, but the 17.5% comes down a little bit next year. Just a thought, you know, it would be going into the savings.
You know my feelings about playing with numbers, I think the numbers that are shown as they're shown, I understand what you're looking at and it might be politically smart, but who knows where the budget's going to go?
And we might get some more granges or rescues.
Are you trying to put them over the edge?
No, I was just wondering, I know we thought about it, but...
Well, I'd say there are and will be grants for specific things, I think recycle can get some grants under ongoing programs, not like ARP. I think the fire department, when they get around to buying a fire truck or whatnot, can get some grants, but that's in the future. Other than that, they're gonna be a little harder to come by. I think Michael can still work the sidewalk grants, because that's an ongoing program. We just have to understand that this ARP grant is a one-time thing and a very large number and we're using it for, I think the best possible use for it is recycling. I can't think of a town service that touches more people more frequently than the dump.
Were you trying to kill Josh if he watches the video?
Hi, other Josh.
Well, I think it's a worthy thing, all behind Josh, the recycle center.
Is the 650 in 2025 for DPW, is that anticipated improvement of that facility? We may have talked about it before, but I forgot.
It's close, but it's not final at this point.
But yes, that is what that number represents, it's a swag based on no estimates or engineer, but yes, that's what, I mean, it would be a major facility.
But the feeling is, that's the number, that's the project of the number, I would hope. And there are a few things there that can't be cut back. The sanitary facilities at Richardson Park is just a bad dream and we have to get past it, it's just one of those things, the snowballed wells and septic systems, you name it, and fortunately we have a one-time plan to offset that. Its costs, its cost is rivaling out of the Pentagon, so that's it.
So with DPW, is there a concept in mind?
Oh, for DPW?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll just explain why I'm asking.
The concept is to add sort of another row of garages and upgrade the abysmal personnel of facilities. The problem is, you got DPW stretched every way possible and they just didn't have time to get to it. And that, in my mind, is understandable, you just can't get blood from a turnip there. And we had enough on our plate where we felt that it could be deferred out of it and with any luck, on a bonding basis, we do lap the town hall, which seems like a good plan, if we can ever get off the dime on the fire station.
So I share your enthusiasm for the sanitary facilities at DPW, I'm just wondering if...
Well, it's a necessary thing.
No, I know, but can anything be done sooner than that to improve those, those have been delinquent for much longer, they're, as you know, they're...
It's a sticky situation though.
Literally. So I'm just wondering if it could be, you know, move forward, move towards, move forward a little bit, at least to take care of that aspect.
On Richardson Park?
No, DPW facility, just to...
We couldn't get a plan and without a plan, our hands are tied.
But there is some money in the capital reserve already that...
Yeah.
Potentially could be used for renovation, it could be a good winter project against, you know, some handy books over there, so.
I'm just wondering if it could be done without compromising the overall project in 2025, just to, in other words, if they're gonna stay where they are, roughly, then...
We had, what I thought was a neat plan to, at one point, to buy a manufactured housing thing for their facilities, would have basically us pad or skid there and then build around that. And it had an added benefit, that if they did that, they could cut way back on their heating because they could keep the garage, the whole thing, at garage temperature, not human temperatures. I thought that was a nifty idea and at the time it was only like 40,000, 50,000. And frankly, if we didn't push that, maybe we should have. And I don't know, how much, you've got to schedule, how much is in DPW?
Oh, they had 70,000 or 80,000.
Yeah, if there's enough for it. And Don Skiva did that and he had drawings of it and very good work, this gentleman. We were trying to apply the same concept to recycling. And it was something even, I believe, so much locally manufactured and, you know, way to talk at garage signs. There was some discussion about septic facilities and stuff, but to my knowledge, and gosh, this goes back five years, we worked around that and it seemed like a neat plan. And then there was some game, oh, well, they could use the other building that...
What 25 is for you?
I never thought it was a really terribly viable idea, but the idea, especially with heating's going right now, putting it up and then letting the shed heat whatever the tolerable temperature is for trucks, seemed like a good plan. And we have the money, I would give it back a bit.
Maybe we could take a look at that. Is that Elkhove area where the septic is?
Yeah.
The natural expansion location?
That would be, but I believe Don's worked around. But we should go back to his work first.
Sure. Put it in the Chesterfield Archives? Is it in the Chesterfield Archives?
Probably, he probably still has it somewhere.
Bruce, Joe, question?
I just was gonna comment that one thing that I've been disappointed with is the recycling center is, I really thought that should have been done like two years ago and it just keeps getting pushed back. And we've discussed it in the meeting, but I just, I was all under the impression that thing was gonna move forward and be all done by now, but it hasn't materialized, so.
The earthquake tractors.
Yeah, but it just, so that's, that's kind of pushed back the DPW situation over there.
I think everybody wants to do it, but permits now, right?
Well, yeah.
I'm just saying, I was disappointed.
I mean, it was something where we just internally realized later than we should have, that we really should have done some look at stormwater because we're increasing and changing our pervious surface a lot and it's near the river, so it's something we came up with later and yeah, definitely got delayed, my fault. We'll get done next year.
Is there an issue with the steel also? Is there an issue with the steel or no?
I don't know, I think that will be, yeah, I think you're right.
We have the same money, we wanna go, but just thinking.
Will we move forward with the drainage?
Absolutely, yeah, Chad Brandon Fieldstone's work is under contract.
You indicated he was out there.
Yeah, I got a note to follow up with him tomorrow to check in, I think he was looking mid-November, so I think we should be in good shape to get that out to bid shortly.
Is that bidding the whole project or pieces of it?
Once he's completed with that, we can then bid the whole project.
Okay. Definitely. Anything else? Everybody else? Well, thank you all for your work, appreciate it, it's helpful to have a guide, a guidebook.
Thank you.
Good job, it's a pleasure. Thank Don.
Yeah, Don.
West Swansea AAA park improvements.
Yeah, so we've got all our permits in place for that project, so we're looking to hopefully get started on it shortly. Director DeRusso and I feel the best way to get it going, so we don't run into some of these challenges with trying to bid a whole project, which can be scheduling and also cost challenges for the town to serve as the general contractor. The first step, which is obviously somewhat weather-dependent, is to toilet a concrete pad for the pavilion, so Joe has an estimate on that. The contractor's time is estimated at $5,000 and the concrete is estimated at $27.50, that's BC construction, I think, or Bill's, yeah, Bill's concrete construction, that's BC, right?
Yeah.
So maybe round it up to 10, but he's hoping to get that done in the next week or two weeks so they can get that in before it gets...
Are they doing the site work, DPW?
Yes, I believe so.
They're doing the forms or Bill doing his own forms?
I did not ask that.
But it can be done in the next couple of weeks.
Right.
Where is the pad going to be?
So I think I failed to insert this, I left it on the agenda when I emailed it out, but you got it.
Okay, it's not going to be right back, it was 20 by 20, put it that way. Because that looks more of a square.
Yes. This is one that, we applied to the grant like four years ago, so the budget will definitely be tight, so.
All right.
Forty-seven. Forty-six is the estimate, I emailed to Joe. Actually, I'd say on here about what you were asking, Bill. I said it might say on here either 45 or 46, that's the quote, may answer what you were asking.
So we need a motion?
Yes, that'd be great.
Pretend?
Yeah, so it'd be half-funded from the recreational facilities, capital reserve might be half-funded from the land water conservation.
I'll make the motion.
So half from each?
Yes.
Five by five, okay.
I'll second that.
I'll second, okay.
Yes, I've got it.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll be back in a week or two for the lumber and that stuff, but this was the median.
Still looking at around 70?
I thought it was eighty, ninety-three was the total estimate, ninety-three, so, yes. Pavilion, parking lot, basketball court, staffs, or at least as close to all that as we can. No, I think the estimate the school had provided for theirs was 45 and we're hoping to do it more effectively by using local talent.
Do we have anything on the rural business?
Well, kind of, a couple of just miscellaneous, talked about sidewalk grants and we got word from the Manadnok Alliance for Sustainable Transportation, heard back on our next phase of the Swansea Center Improvement Project and we were the only applicant, which means we got more than we asked for, which is good. Initially, they were gonna have a caveat that this would be the last contribution towards that project since this would be their third, but I think Sarah persuaded them to take out that caveat, so we're hoping to still obviously get as far as we can, but, yeah, so keep going for the grants, like I said, we were the only applicant, so keep taking that money to keep expanding the sidewalk system and get closer to that bridge.
You have a basket before too long.
That's right, we're getting there.
Don't be afraid to go south a little.
That's the next phase.
Oh, okay.
And then we also heard back just today from the Southwestern Regional Planning Commission's Transportation Committee that our proposed project for Route 10 improvements was the top project recommended, so that's gonna be going into the 10-year transportation plan, which 10 years, sounds like a long time away, but once you, you gotta get it in those programs and then we get some of these other funding sources that they tend to backfill projects that are already in the plan, so hopefully we can do it before 10 years.
Great.
And then just an FYI, the transfer station had to close a little bit early today, they have an issue with their lighting, they went to kind of turn on some of the floodlights and they had some challenges, so hopefully Inlet's gonna get over there tomorrow, get that resolved.
He was so confident a couple of weeks ago. What about the application for the water company grant?
I actually just spoke to Mr. Driver about that today, coincidentally, and yeah, working on that, it's due a month from today, December 9th, and he expects to have a draft for us for review in a week or two.
So we'll meet the deadline, right?
Absolutely.
Somebody have anything else?
Can you just, we were talking about that water company deal, what's that all about?
It's related to the West Swansea Water Company, it would be like a feasibility study to reassess it with engineers, yeah.
Great.
To complement the work previously done by the Water Study Committee.
Infrastructure.
And look at the, yeah, infrastructure and a business case analysis to make sure there's... there's sufficient customers we're able to support it. No commitment to
Town first.
We'll be exploring options, which could be a town purchase, could be no action, could be a village district, so no, no clear path decided, yeah.
Further exploration relatively quickly, if I remember correctly.
As we make a decision. Right, yes, correct.
Anyone else?
So I?
We have any non-polls?
Yes, one for hierarchy.
Thank you all.